Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Happy Friday, everyone.
Happy Friday.
All right. I'll call us back to order at this time for the Nash County Board of Commissioners meeting. And before I get started, can I have a show of hands of commissioners who intends to go next Tuesday night to the Ag Center for Foreland Preservation? I'm trying to see whether to adjourn our meeting at the end or recess it. Have we got most of us going?
You've got a majority.
I see a majority already. All right, we do have a majority, so if the clerks, if you'll remind me to recess instead of adjourn when we get to that point today, I appreciate it.
And I thought you don't have, so Fred needs to do our invocation and Commissioner Outlaw.
I don't have one.
Huh?
I don't have one.
No, you got it.
Okay, okay, all right. Anyway, getting started, appreciate everyone being back this morning. It is customary for us to begin our meetings with an invocation by sitting commissioner. During that time, you're welcome to stand and join us. You're welcome to have your own prayer during that time, or of course, you're welcome to have a moment of silence, whatever you're led to do. After the invocation, which will be by Commissioner Fred Belfield, we'll have a pledge allegiance to the flag by Commissioner Wayne Outlaw. So at this time, Mr. Belfield, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Let us pray. Every day is a day of Thanksgiving. God's been good to you, and every day he's blessing you. Every day is a day of Thanksgiving, so let's take the time to glorify the Lord. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for another day. You woke us up this morning, clotheing our right minds, blood running warm in our veins, startling us on our way, on our journey back here today to work on our budget. We pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding of each other and understanding what we are trying to do to make out a fiscal year budget for 24, 25. We thank you for your guidance, and we know you will keep blessing us every day because every day is a day of Thanksgiving. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Vouluv allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. At this time, I'll turn it over to our manager.
Well, thank you. Happy Friday again, and I appreciate your attendance today. We got through our second day's agenda for the most part yesterday, and the only item that's left is our pay study for public safety, and so I'll turn it over to Jonathan Boone.
All right. Thank you. Everyone should have a hard copy of the presentation. And it was very astute of the manager to open this up by saying this is an update on the public safety study. Your agenda makes reference to a recommendation, and I will have a recommendation, but the recommendations are not about salaries as of yet, and I'll elaborate on that a little bit more as part of the presentation. But where I'd like to start is just give some little background on how we arrived at this point in this particular study, and just remind you that Nash County completed, last completed a salary study in 2022, and we implemented that salary study in fiscal year 2023. So we're in the second year of the salary recommendations and adjustments that were made from our last salary study. And typically, the county has conducted a salary study about every seven to 10 years. So again, the last study was completed in 2022. Prior to that, the study prior to that was in 2015, so that was seven years between those two studies. But here we are in 2024, so we're two years on the other side of our last salary study. And because of movements in the market, particularly in public safety, a decision was made this year to conduct an update to look at salaries, particularly in the sheriff's office and emergency services, because some of the changes that we've seen in the market and certainly some of the challenges that we faced here locally. And as you are well aware, we've seen some higher vacancy rates in some key positions in both of those departments, and that's really what we want to address through this salary study update. So again, I reference both departments, the sheriff's office and emergency services. And within each of those two departments, within sheriff's office, and I'm going to use plus minus, I won't give any exact numbers because I might stunt my toe, but the sheriff's office has about 23 positions, 23 different type classifications within the department, and that includes roughly 127 full-time employees. Emergency services, I believe we had 30 positions that we tasked the consultant with looking at, and that includes about 133 full-time equivalents. I'm in the ballpark, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Tony says yes, so good. And again, we engaged a consultant to help us with this, and we're working with David Hill with Piedmont Triad Regional Council of Governments, currently doing some work in our area. And through our work with David, I want to say he's currently working with five or six different communities, both counties and towns or municipalities. So David is the one that's helping us with the study. So the next question was, well, where are we going to collect data? And we focused on eight counties and eight municipalities and towns, and you can see those listed there. The eight counties Franklin, Halifax, Johnson-Pitt, Vance, Wake, Wayne-Wilson, and municipalities, towns Greenville, Henderson, Knightdale, Nashville, Rocky Mount, Wake Forest, Wilson, and Zebulon. So David's task was to reach out to those 16 employers, some of which he already had the data for because of his work in our area, and to obtain data for each of those positions that I mentioned, again, both in the sheriff's office and in emergency services. And one thing that we found, and certainly David was already aware before he started the study, no two jurisdictions are locked. You will not find another Nash County in our area. Each county, each municipality, each town has their own different nuances in terms of their organizational structure. So there's ways to address that, but I just want to make you aware, you're not going to necessarily find a master deputy in every county, town, or city. And I've got some examples of that that I'll share with you. But again, David wanted each of those 16 employers to get the data that they had for the positions that were comparable to the ones here in the county to use as part of this study. And another nuance that I'll touch on a couple of different times, and again, most of you are probably aware, but for those of you that are maybe not as familiar with our pay structure, the sheriff's office operates on a rank and pay structure. So again, we use the example of a deputy. Deputy assigned to a pay grade, and there's one pay rate. That make any difference if the deputy has been a deputy for a day or seven years, the deputy's paid at the same rate. So whatever your rank is dictates your pay, whereas most of the organization, and emergency services certainly falls in that category, are pay in class. So a position, and I'll use an example, telecommunicator, is assigned to a pay grade, and then you have a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. So I've got some slides, I'll show that to you, but it's important for you to understand that nuance between those two departments. Again, sheriff's office, rank and pay. Whatever your rank is dictates your pay. Everyone in that rank, same pay. Emergency services, really 80% of our organization is pay in class. I'm going to try to finish my thought. Is assigned to a grade, which has a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum, and they can be anywhere between the midpoint and the maximum. So pay can vary for those telecommunicators, for example, for example, emergency services. Yes, sir?
First of all, do you like questions as you go, or you want us to make our notes on questions and ask you when you get through?
I'll be glad to take them as we go, or you can wait till the end. I'm flexible in that regard.
Why is the sheriff's department different than what you appear to say all of the rest of our departments?
And you'll see this in some of the data that I share with you. I was not in the county manager's office at the time, but I don't know, four years ago, maybe, five years ago?
This was with the last pay study that was implemented for FY '23. This was the sheriff's request, is that he moved to a rank and pay system.
And it's a similar structure to the highway patrol? Highway patrol uses a rank and pay structure?
So if I come to work as a deputy, I make the same thing as a deputy that's been there seven or eight years.
Once you have gone through the school and you start in the field, yes, sir?
So at that time, the sheriff shared his philosophy. He wanted his folks to increase their pay by increasing their skill set, their training, and moving their way up the ranks. And they explained to us that in the highway patrol, that person that comes in day one making the same thing as a highway patrolman that had been there 12 years, the highway patrolmen that had been there 12 years, they understand that when they came in day one, they were making the same thing as others. So it's part of that culture, and that was his request at the time, and that's what we have in place.
Apparently, that wasn't discussed with the commissioners, because I don't remember that. It was done internally then.
Correct. It was done as part of the adopted pay study.
Okay. Sounds awful odd to me. Go ahead, ma'am.
That was the question I had also, because I don't remember it coming in front of the commissioners, and did it not have to, or is that something that each depart?
I cannot take credit for that, but I hope you enjoyed it, that brief interlude.
It did. It did as part of the pay study, as part of the adopted budget for FY '23.
Well, Mr. Boone, what you've just pointed out helps me understand some of the unrest that I hear from my employees over there, because, well, I'll just let you finish, and
And again, since predates me a bit, the career ladders were also created, they created
then I'll kind of soak in, but it turns a light bulb on for me why we've got a lot of
at the same time, senior and master deputy, do you recall?
Correct.
Okay.
unrest of employees over there and comments that I hear from employees as I run into
So the career ladders, which we'll talk a little bit about, were also implemented with the last pay study.
them. Now I understand them a lot better, but thank you.
So I mentioned those deputies, you have two additional positions above that, a senior Okay. So again, that is an important nuance to understand as we're talking about the study deputy based on years of experience, certifications, training, and then one level above that, and we're talking about the data and the data that we collected. Rank and pay, one rate, pay in class, you're assigned to a class as a minimum, a midpoint a master deputy.
How would it's probably coming in to work with sheriff's department?
and a maximum, you can be anywhere in between the minimum and the maximum, based on how
If he's coming in, he or she is coming in to fill, say, a sergeant position or
many years you've been with the county, if you've been promoted, et cetera, et cetera,
a lieutenant position, they would start at that same pay that a current lieutenant is
based on county policy. So let's see, so we collected that data for each of the employers, and I'll share some of that with you.
there and making, that has been there about 10 years.
We're not going to get down, or I had not intended to get down to all 57 positions, Whatever the pay is for that rank, that's what they would make. because although we have four hours, that's probably really more than you could stomach today, and I don't want to ruin anybody's Friday. Coming into the organization, they would make the same thing as somebody that's already But I have that data if you're interested, but I'll share a few with you. there in that same rank.
But that's the base, isn't that the base rate?
But again, we compare the pay ranges, the base salary, and then David also collected Is that the base rate? Yes, sir, we are talking about base rates. data for the average salary within a given classification. So the average salary within those 16 employers, assuming each of those employers had a telecommunicator and not all 16 do, but when they had that position, he wanted to know for all the employees as a telecommunicator, what is the average salary? Okay? And again, similarly with those positions for the sheriff's office. Most of the comparables that we have are from agencies, the 16 agencies that they had a comparable were pay in class. They were not rank and pay. So we're having to take pay in class data and equate it to a rank and pay system. So I'll try to make more sense of that for you as we move through the presentation. But that last bullet there is the average salary I mentioned, so again, if we want to talk about the sheriff's office for a deputy sheriff. In a county, that's a fairly typical classification. In a city or town, you may see a police officer or a police officer one, that's more or less the equivalent of a deputy sheriff. So when you go to that employer, one of those 16, and again, a municipality or town that has a police officer one, the data collected was, tell me how many police officer ones you have, tell me the base salary for each one of those police officer ones, and then David would compute an average. So you'll see some of this data on a slide that I'll share with you here in a minute. All right, so we're all together so far, the best we can be? All right. So again, we use that market rate data, if you want to call that average salary, and generally, that average salary in our conversations with David equates to an employee that has somewhere between eight to 10 years of experience in that position. So not years of service, but years in that position. And we use that market rate data, particularly for the sheriff's office, to set the salary for that rank and pay structure. And again, I'll share the results of that with you for a couple of positions here in a minute. And then we use the pay grade data, so we're getting back to pay in class, again, that's 80% of the employees in the county, more or less, pay grade data and market rate data to evaluate all those other positions. And again, primarily in this study for emergency services. And then the final bullet point there is if we strictly look at the market data obtained, there are some positions that the recommendation would be to reclass those up, and there are some that would be recommended those be reclassed down. And preliminary numbers based on market data would suggest that about six positions that we may need to adjust up, and about six positions we need to adjust down. But again, that's strictly just based on market data and then looking at parity within the organizational chart. So for those positions that are assigned to pay in class, so again, in this case, emergency services, once you've established the correct pay class, again, the pay rate could fall anywhere between the minimum and the maximum. So we look at that data, we look at that market rate data or that average pay rate for a given position that we're looking at, and then we use a model to try to adjust those salaries to be more consistent with what the market rate data is telling us. But again, that's only applicable to emergency services, not to the sheriff's office. And as I mentioned, in some cases, a position, you will not find that position within those 16 employers, and I'll show you an example in a minute, a major is one. So when you run into that situation, we look at the organizational chart, if you will. We look at positions below it, we look at positions above it, we're trying to maintain parity within that org chart, and that's how the pay rate was set. And again, I'll show you that here in just a second. So any questions about that? I know I'm throwing a lot at you, and we've got plenty of time, so we can circle back if we need to. We're all good? All right. And next steps, and this harkens back to my initial comments about, I don't have a recommendation for you today on salaries, the manager's office does not have a recommendation for you, but just to give you kind of an update of where we're at. But our next steps, after our meeting today, the intention would be to share this data that we've collected with each of the departments, with the sheriff, with Tony Cameron, emergency services, give their staff time to review that data, and then we will look to schedule a meeting with the consultant, with David Hill, and with our staff to review that data and discuss any concerns that we have. While I've been really impressed with David so far, I don't think David would suggest that he's perfect, that he can walk on water, so we want to make sure that departments have a chance to look at this data. If there's any issues, concerns that we have, that we can talk about those, work through those before we attempt to finalize any recommendations to bring forward to you in the budget. So that would be the next step in this process. And I actually just sent an email to both departments last night. We're trying to schedule a meeting for the first week in May, and we're looking at May 2nd or May 3rd. So we're trying to find a date. We tried to set a date earlier and schedules did not allow, so right now, we're looking at May 2nd or May 3rd. But again, we want to sit down, review the data, give them the data, the numbers are what the numbers are. There may be, again, when we're trying to equate positions, there may be some concerns there we need to talk about, but we want to have those conversations early on. We do not want to wait until we try to bring a recommendation forward and then we're talking about differences of opinion. We want to have that conversation with the consultant sooner rather than later. Any questions about that? All right, so here's our current salary tables, and again, on the left, you'll see, and that's not our complete table, but I didn't see the need to include all of it, but you'll see pay grades 102 through 127. You see a minimum, you see a midpoint, you see a maximum, and then the range just shows you the difference between the min and the max is, in all cases, 61.04%. So that applies to about 80% of the organization, and in this study, all of emergency services, and to a few positions in the sheriff's office, but only a few. For the most part, in the sheriff's office, we have a pay and rate structure for sworn and non-sworn. You see that there, again, that is current budget year numbers. And when we conducted the study, that's another important point to make, and I should have put that in the slides, when we're comparing the market data and looking at our pay rates, we're talking about 2024 numbers. And I'll share a recommended table that shows, including a cost of living, but we were looking at a point in time, and where we're at right now is we're in FY '24, so we want to compare salaries from other employers fiscal year '24 to county numbers fiscal year '24. Not certain what they'll do in '25, no, we're talking about a cost of living adjustment, but we're trying to compare apples to apples. Fiscal year 2024 salary data. This is our current pay structure. Any questions about that? And I will say, and just to remind, we are missing one position, I think, in detention center on this slide, but doesn't really affect what we're doing, but I did want to point that out. I think 302, I forget who's at 302 in detention, but anyway, that's our current salary tables except for one position. All right, so for the data that we've collected, I want to go ahead and share this table with you, and again, I cannot stress enough, cannot stress enough, Anita, I cannot stress enough that this data is before we've had a chance to sit down with a consultant and review the data. And Tony, obviously, I don't have a table like this for you because you're not rank and pay, but again, this is just based on the market data that we have collected so far. No conversations about the data collected, comparable positions, et cetera, but kind of where we are right now before we sit down with the departments and have a conversation. So you can see what I've attempted to reflect in this table, it shows both sworn and non-sworn, but those positions highlighted in blue, those are positions where the consultant was able to find pretty good data to set market rates for the rank and pay structure. We had good comparables, good data compared to the others, and when we had data on sworn, it kind of informed his recommendations, preliminary recommendations, I should say, on non-sworn. But senior deputy, master deputy, again, you will not find as many of those in those 16 agencies. Major, we didn't find as many comparables, so we had to look at, again, hierarchy. But you can see their current pay rate for a deputy, 45,925. That blended pay rate, that's based on data taken, taking data from both counties and towns and municipalities. And I've got a slide that will show you that, but just based on the preliminary recommendation, and you'll get tired of me saying preliminary, but the preliminary recommendation would suggest about a 16% adjustment from where we are today to where the market would say we would want to be today, if we wanted to be in the middle, in the average of those 16 employers. And then looking at the blended, I called it blended because, again, that is based on average of the county data and the municipal town data, you add 5% of that, you could see that that would push that number to 55,939.
What did you say, Ben?
Excuse me?
Where does the 5% come from you added in the last column?
At this point, that's just assuming if it was a 5% cost of living, what that number would be.
Thank you.
But again, did I mention that all these numbers are preliminary?
I think you did. Adequate job of that, sir.
Okay. The problem won't keep me from saying it again, but I just want to make sure. So any questions about this table?
The only question I got to date is where you went to get to compare to. I question what we're going to end up with, which I already do, simply because you've got four categories out of Wake County, which we all know we can't compete with Wake County. And of course, I've always questioned why you use municipalities and not stick with counties, and it's evident why we should question that, because you've only got four out of, excuse me, five out of 17 categories where you've got adequate number to compare them with. You've got five blue positions here, and yet you've got 17, so the comparison between what you're doing is obviously hasn't worked too well, because you've got an equal number of municipalities included in here, eight and eight. And out of the 16, you've got four of them out of Wake County, that bothers me some, but more so, it bothers me that you're comparing counties with cities, but please, please go ahead.
Okay. All right, so again, any questions about the table? So again, I had not intended and did not want to bore you with all the data we've collected, but I did pull two of the positions within sheriff's office to share with you, one of which you already had a preview to during our small group meetings, the deputy sheriff, but again, you'll see there, of course, some of the data is obscured, but you can see at an entry level, at an entry level position, whether it's deputy sheriff, or you can see for Greenville, it'll be a police officer, and that's pretty common in municipal town, police officer, police officer one. You could find data at all 16 of those employers that you could use to kind of determine what salary should be in our area. And what you will also see in that slide is, I referred to that blended rate on that previous slide. So when you take that data, we took, we looked at just county data, what is the average among the counties? Okay? So that's the first number that you'll see right here. Average for the county surveyed, at least the data that the consultant's collected, and we'll be talking about with the departments, 49,529. But again, remember, this is pay in class data. This is not rank and pay data. It's pay in class, important distinction, which I alluded to earlier, and we'll talk about some more. But it applies, this same philosophy applies through emergency services when we're talking about rank and pay. The median, so the number where half, half the employers will have a higher salary, half will be lower, pretty close, 49,183, second number. We just look at counties for that minimum pay rate, and we've got maximums and midpoints and maximums here, but we're just looking at entry level salary. Average for the counties, 46,991, median, 46,417. If we just look at municipal town data, 52,067, 49,867. If you take those six numbers and you average them, it's 49,09. But again, remember, that is a minimum rate. What you may recall from the data we'd shared in small group meetings is obscured by this slide here, but I haven't. So again, in Franklin County, for all the deputy sheriffs, however many they have, and I don't know the number, however many they have, the average salary, and again, that's everyone, they're in pay in class, they're not rank and pay, so again, their number has to be somewhere between the minimum and the maximum, where their average salary for deputy sheriff is 51257. And you can follow that down, at least the numbers you can see. Halifax County, 5532. Wake County, which Chairman referenced, 59220. Wilson County, 55838. You can see one municipality town, Greenville, 52920. But when you take that data, you take the averages, and again, we've got an average overall, a median overall, average county, median county, average city, median city, and then we take that average, that average is the number that's shown right here, 53275. And that number ties back to the number I showed you in the previous slide for a deputy sheriff. So that is the median, excuse me, that is the average of those six numbers that we just discussed, the average and the median, blended, the county, the city. But looking at the average salary is 53275. So that's what is shown here, 53275. Yes, sir?
Can you tell us how many of those 16 agencies are rank and pay and how many are pay in class?
Yes.
Can you identify those?
What I, you may recall from the data we'd shared in small group meetings and is obscured by this slide here, but I haven't. So, again, in Franklin County, for all the deputy sheriffs, every how many they have, and I don't know the number, every how many they have, the average salary, and again, that's everyone, they're in, they're in pay-in-class, they're not rank and pay. So, again, their number has to be somewhere between the minimum and the maximum, where their average salary for deputy sheriff is 51257. And you can follow that down, at least the numbers you can see. Halifax County, 5532. Wake County, which Chairman referenced, 59220. Wilson County, 55838. You can see one municipal town, Greenville, 52920. But when you take that data, you take the averages, and again, we've got an average overall, a median overall, average county, median county, average city, median city, and then we take that average, that average is, is the number that's shown right here, 53275. And that number ties back to the number I showed you in the previous slide for a deputy sheriff. So, that is the median, excuse me, that is the average of those six numbers that we just discussed, the average and the median, blended, the county, the city. But looking at the average salary is 53275. So, that's what is shown here, 53275. Yes, sir?
Can you tell us how many of those 16 agencies are rank and pay and how many are pay-in-class?
Yes.
Can you identify those? None.
None.
So, we're?
We're the, out of the 16.
We're the only one that's rank and pay.
Out of these 16, now, I can't tell you how many counties may have rank and pay, but out of the eight that we surveyed, we've included in our study, and certainly none of the municipalities and towns, but of the eight counties we talked to, they are all pay class.
Trying to understand, so if I'm a, if I'm a deputy in Nash County with five years' service, when I, if I went to another county, would I, I would obviously go in the pay-in-class system, would I get credit for the five years' service that I've got coming out of Nash County, which would obviously increase my, my salary?
You can probably imagine it's difficult for me to give you a singular answer for eight different employees.
Well, I would think that would be the case. I would.
Well, the, the only thing I would say that even with our structure, rank and pay, you have the opportunity through the career ladders based on years of service and training, so they, they have the opportunity to, to advance from a deputy to a senior deputy, or from a senior deputy to a master deputy. So, you may not have those opportunities in some of those other counties or towns.
In the other, some of the other agencies.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's kind of difficult to give a, a specific answer.
It's really, it's really not apples to apples then when you're trying to compare?
There, there, as I have, I already knew and has been reinforced through our work so far on this study, there's, there's the science to this, there's numbers, and then there's the art.
Well, it's as close as you can get because it's what it actually is.
Yeah.
Okay. I understand.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm looking at our black notebook. Can't tell you the page, but it said the average counties, 54,750. You're saying that the average median is 49?
So, what, what I believe may have been baked into the numbers we'd shared with you at the small group meetings, at, at that time, we had also included a COLA, and I believe that had 3%. So, I think that number is probably the base salary plus 3%.
Okay.
So, but again, th, these numbers are evolving as we go, and I anticipate these numbers will evolve a little bit more after our individual meetings with each department. So, please understand the numbers I'm sharing with you are as of 9:32 on April 12th.
Yep.
So, we mentioned deputy sheriff. So, again, found good data on deputy sheriff or entry level law enforcement officer. Major, on the other hand, a little bit more difficult. That's where you have to look in pair, at the parity in the org chart. But you can see here, the only true major, and this slide has not been updated to show the City Rock Mountain, Anita, and I recognize that and want to mention that, but the only true major position that we found in the eight counties was Pitt County. The other two is Johnson and Vance, their major deputy serves as the chief deputy. So, those are two different, two different positions. That is not apples to apples. So, Pitt County, you can see the number there, and then this slide has not been updated. City Rocky Mount does have major positions. I think Sheriff had shared with me, they recently hired two. The consultant is asking for that data, but even if we get that data, we'll have two data points out of 16, so we're still probably going to look at relationships in this case between, you see it in the, the comments there, between the chief deputy and the captain. Captain will be one pay grade below, chief deputy would be one pay grade above. Alright, so we still more or less together? Okay. The moment that Tony's been waiting for. So, again, only selected two positions. The first one I've got there is telecommunicator. So, you'll see, again, this is a pay-in-class position. It's not rank and pay, it's pay-in-class. So, the, the data we have here, we've got data from all eight counties, not necessarily as common in municipal and towns, that is really the bigger jurisdictions that have telecommunications. You can see we had data for three, three cities. So, we've computed those same numbers here, looking at what should be our entry level salary, and we've also got percentages. And what our, what our data as of, Tony, 9:34 on April 12th would suggest is that our current pay grade 109 for telecommunicator, the minimum's 39,828. That is 1.6% less than the overall average, 1.6% less than the median, 3.4% more than just the county data, 2.6% more than the median for all those eight counties, certainly lower than the three cities we have, the average and the median, and then the blended number is 41,902. So, again, this is just looking at the minimums. The average of all that data is 41,902. You can see we're at 39,828. So, based on the current data and not having met with the departments, is the recommendation is leave that at pay grade 109, and then it would be adjusted by the COLA, and with the COLA, we, we would be more or less in line with that blended number for the counties and the cities. We go over here to the average. So, again, the average is a little more meaningful in terms of pay-in-class for a position like telecommunicator. You see for Franklin County, for all their telecommunicators and telecommunicator, that would be the entry level, whatever they call it, in, in most cases, you can see it's either telecommunicator or telecommunicator one. Franklin County, the data we collected suggests that the average salary, base salary, I'm going to say that again, base salary, would be $42,070, and you can fol, follow the number down. The high watermark, therefore, telecommunicator is Johnson County, 53,796, and looks like the low there was Vance County at 37,890. And we've got the three, three data points averages for the towns, and then, you know, I'm sorry, the numbers are obstructed over here, but we use this data. So, again, firstly, we want to look at it at a pay-in-class position, telecommunicator. Do we have it in the correct class? Is it in the right place on this big chart here with all the numbers on it? Right now, it's a 109. And then, once we determine where it needs to be, what class it needs to be assigned to, in this case, the recommendation is to keep it at 109, then we look at the average. So, we've got a couple of different models that we're using to try to address what our average salary would be, and you can see today, well, actually, this date, I guess, was maybe, maybe early March, as far as the averages computed. The average salary for the telecommunicators when the data was collected was 40,713. You can see, I did have one number here for the overall. The blended average for all 11 is 45,021. So, we've got some different models that we're looking at how to adjust that number to be more competitive or comparable in market. And the two models that were working were really full models, but the two different approaches is looking at years of service, total years of service, and maybe not as, not as helpful for telecommunicator, because if you're coming in entry level position, they probably not were promoted to a telecommunicator, they're probably hired as a telecommunicator, maybe more meaningful up higher levels of the, the organizational chart. But years of service, and the other model would be time in position or time in grade, how long they've served as a telecommunicator. And then, we look at some adjustments based on those two factors, either total years of service, how long you've been a county employee, in this case, how long you've been a telecommunicator. Any questions about that? So, again, a little bit different philosophy. It's a pivot from the rank and pay to the pay-in-class. Are we in the right, are we in the right rung on the ladder? And then, we've got some boundaries, a minimum and a maximum, more or less, and then we're using a model based on years of service or time in position to try to adjust our average salary within that classification to what the market says the average salary is. And again, generally, rule of thumb, that will be an employee, a telecommunicator that has eight to 10 years of experience. Alright, so, the, the other, the other data that I've provided here, and I missed putting the position, this is the data for paramedic. Entry level paramedic, currently assigned to a pay grade 113. You can see the recommendation is to remain at a 113 based on the data that we have so far. Obviously, paramedic, you're not going to find those typically in a municipal town. They're all counties, all county data here. You can see the minimum, midpoint, maximum. You can see where they're computed. Obviously, we've only got county data to work with, so the average entry level salary for those eight counties, 47,977. The median, where half is higher, half is lower, 45,589. You average those two numbers, 46,783. We're actually at 48,411. So, the data that we have right now, just based on the eight counties that we've talked to, or we've received data from, would suggest we're actually about 3.5% above the minimum. But let's look at those averages. So, not sure, I think this has been updated. We actually have this in the model now. At the time, we did not. So, let's just pretend like there's a number here, although I can't remember what it is. Franklin County, the average salary for paramedic, 57,654. You can follow the numbers down. High watermarks, Wake County, 73,052. The, the low end, 46,766. Our average salary for paramedic, take all the paramedics we had at the time that the data was handed off from Human Resources to David Hill, was 52,752. And then, if we look at this, these numbers, and only these numbers, so this, this average and median would change a little bit once the Halifax numbers input, but based on those numbers, average 56,887, the median, 57,649. Average those two numbers, 57,268. So, you see the delta there, what our average is, what the market is. But again, that generally, rule of thumb, would reflect a paramedic with eight to 10 years of experience. So, one of the issues, and certainly I've looked at this one because I know there's been a lot of conversation about paramedics, is we've, we've got a number of fairly new paramedics, time in position. And I've got some of that data, and actually, I didn't bring it up here with me. Tony certainly can speak to that. But where we run into some challenges, again, if we're looking at averages and we've got paramedics that, a number of paramedics with less than two years of experience, then, you know, it's, when we start looking at what our average is versus what the market is, assuming that 57,268 of other employers is reflective of paramedics that have more time in position versus positions that we have, may, maybe have less time in position. So, again, I want to say I looked at data and there was at least 10 that had less than two years of experience. That, that affects that number a little bit, so just keep that in mind. And that's one of the things we'll be talking with the departments, in this case, emergency services, about when we meet with the consultant. So, again, this is just where we are today. Any questions about that?
Of the, the current average for paramedics really is reflective of the time in grade for paramedics in each county?
That is correct.
So, I'm trying to understand this. So, in Nash County, I would be hired in as a paramedic at 48,411?
If you were hired in and not promoted from a?
I'm just saying, I'm starting.
Yeah, if you come in off the street as a paramedic.
And that, to me, I'm just looking at, that compares pretty favorably. The midpoint, 68,186.
That's 63,186.
63, I'm sorry. And then, the maximum is 77 plus. So, is, is the problem with, with the paramedics simply because it's a, it's a newer group in Nash County, or what's the problem with the average? Is that what it is?
Well, I, I would, I would not want to call it a problem.
The challenge.
I would just say that, that what, one of the factors that certainly has a direct correlation to what our average salary is, is time in position. So, if you've only been in the job for a year or two, you're probably not going to be too far out in front of the rate that you were hired at.
Mm-hmm.
Or the rate that you were promoted to. But we do have a number of, of paramedics, and, and it's not just paramedics. Then, we all also have some similarities in telecommunicators. But certainly, time in position is going to have an impact on where you are between the minimum and the maximum.
One more question or comment. Is one of the other factors for, like, maybe the paramedic pool, is that we're not just competing with other governmental entities? Is that we're also competing with healthcare, private healthcare for those employees?
I think that's certainly one of the things we'll spend some time talking about when we meet with a department on May 2nd or May 3rd, is there are some positions that maybe we have more competition with the private sector. And that's, that's universally true necessarily throughout the entire org chart, but certainly there are some positions where you have more competition for the private sector, and how we, how we account for that is something that we'll need to talk about. But as reflected here, the, this is just county, town, well, county, town, city data.
Do you think we have competition with the private sector? Would be the paramedic primarily? So, that they could work in a private doctor's office or more importantly, in a hospital in emergency?
Okay. And since we're talking about paramedics, I will share, I asked Tony for an update on this this morning. Currently, the department has 13 vacancies, paramedic.
Total number?
Well, the information he gave me suggested their goal would be to have 15, or fully staffed would be 15 paramedics on these shifts, so that would be 60. Am I saying that correctly, Tony? And, and, and just to, in, in the interest of parity, Anita, I will share that the last report I had from the sheriff's office, which Anita was kind enough to share with me on March 28th, they, if we're looking at deputies, we had 12 deputies on patrol, two SROs and one civilian. Is that still accurate, to your knowledge?
And one major.
Yeah, we're talking about, but if I'm talking about deputies, because I showed that slide on deputies, 12 on patrol, two SROs, one civilian.
Can you do that again? 12 deputies, two SROs and?
One civil.
Civil.
And similar to, similar to emergency services, there's four, four patrol shifts.
Four shifts. Yeah. So, you got 15 vacancies, 12, one and two. Did I miss one?
That's right.
That's right.
Okay. Well, we're talking about deputies, though.
I was talking about deputies.
Right.
And then, there's a major, which is retired.
Right. Can you give the total number of those? The total number of deputies?
Total number of deputies, 15.
The total number of working?
Oh, I'm sorry, total number of deputies.
That compares with the 60.
Anita, I'm, I'm going to need some help on that one. I didn't bring my org chart with me.
And you can get it back to me.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll, I'll send you that data after the fact, and I'll work with the department to get that number. So, next to the last slide, and again, there's my favorite word of the day. We could all say it together, preliminary, preliminary budget numbers. So, this is showing the data from one of those models I talked about, and actually, I've got data from two of the models. So, this is one that's focused on time in position, where we're trying to look at what the average salary is to what our current average is. Once we set the minimum, midpoint and maximum, and we're looking at our average versus the market average, this is one of the models we were using for years of service. I shared two numbers here, but looking at time and position and comparing that to the midpoint of the pay range, which is, again, generally, rule of thumb, is what that average, that market rate is going to be. It's going to be somewhere close to midpoint. Making those adjustments across the, both departments, which again, is actually more meaningful for emergency services. You can see there, it's about a $1.1 million increase in salaries, and across both departments, total payroll is approaching like $16.2 million. So, if you like numbers like I do, every 1% is right at $162,000, and if you look at a increase of $1.1 million, that is an average of right at 6.1%. But I have a range, again, there's four different models. Just showed the numbers from two of those there on this slide, but the low end is 770, again, based on data we have today, we've not met with the departments, but 770,000 to a million dollars, so salary, salary increase anywhere from 4.7% to 6.1% overall. So, that's just a general number. Certainly, they're different. We already looked at one for the deputy sheriff, the slide I showed you again, that was like 16% based on the data, but the overall number anywhere from 4.7% to 6.1%.
That 25% is benefits that I'm looking at?
Yes, sir. That was just a- Yes, sir, that was just a number that was plugged in for benefits, and it's actually a little bit higher.
A little low, isn't it?
Yes, a little higher than that.
The number you mentioned, the increase between 4.7% and 6.1%, that is before a COLA adjustment?
That's correct. This is just looking at where we are in the current fiscal year, does not account for COLA.
Okay, thank you.
Breakdown, I understand that number is Office of the Sheriff as well as the EMS?
Yes, so again, so again, this model, with the exception of a few civilian positions in the sheriff's office, most positions sheriff's offices are rank and pay. So these models have no bearing, because this is all about looking at market averages and our current average.
Sure, understand.
And in rank and pay, we're trying to set the pay rate at the average.
Right.
So of that, of that $1 million roughly, we'll give you rough numbers, if we just look at the adjustment in rank and pay, where we are today is about half a million dollars. So it ends up being about rank and pay, sheriff's office is about half a million, based on these numbers, and emergency services adjusting pay grade. So in some cases, the pay grade goes up, there's some employees that will be adjusted to the minimum, and then we're addressing the difference between the market average and our average salary. That cost, those two pieces together for emergency services is about half a million, and the sheriff's office is roughly about half a million. Does that answer your question?
No, but that's okay.
Okay, well, let me say it a different way.
Go ahead.
If we just look at rank and pay, and making sure that emergency services positions are in the correct pay grade, they're right rung on the ladder, if that analogy helps you. That cost, those two together, sheriff's office and emergency services, is about $580,000. Again, I just told you sheriff's office, yeah, $580,000. Sheriff's office is about half a million, because again, the adjustment based on years of service and time in position, either model is irrelevant for rank and pay. There's only one number. So just to bring the average, the market rate, our pay for a deputy sheriff to what the market data suggests, and going up each rung of the ladder, is about half a million dollars. Those adjustments in pay-in-class for emergency services, so bringing employees to the minimum, is about $76,000. So it's not a lot of movement in the pay grade, but again, we just did a pay study two years ago, so hopefully, the market hadn't moved too much in terms of determining what pay grade it needs to be at. But when we start looking at market averages, that's where there's more of an impact in emergency services. But again, that's because they're a pay-in-class structure, not a rank and pay.
So just for clarification, on slide six, you said that does not include the COLA, the preliminary budget numbers, slash?
Uh-oh.
No, no, I'm looking at page six, maybe it's a different slide for you. Preliminary budget numbers.
Okay.
Sue just asked a question.
That does not include, that does not include COLA.
But if you go back to the rank and pay structure, the blended FY '25, that does include COLA.
Yes, sir, I did include it, just to give you some idea of what 5% with, 5% adjustment, what that would do to the numbers as they are today.
Okay.
I'm going to scratch my head. Any questions? Any more questions?
Refresh my memory, maybe the manager do this, the number we were looking at yesterday for total budget, did it address this at all or not?
There is a number plugged in there to address this, yes.
Okay.
And it reflects?
We feel like it will accommodate and probably be a surplus of what will, where we will land in the end.
All right, any other questions?
Look, if I ask you what the number is, it'll reveal where you're at, so I won't do that, okay? I'm good.
Okay.
Any other question from commissioners?
So what is our plan moving forward to discuss this, and so we will know what's on the table?
So again, next step will be to meet with the departments, let them review the data, let's hash that out with the consultant. Again, if we need to talk about paramedics and to what degree the private market impacts that number, work through all that, whatever all those issues are, we hope to do that on May 2nd or May 3rd, and then based on that, we'll, if we need to go back and look at, collect some additional data, whatever we need to do to reconcile, to address those issues, and then we'll bring, we'll compile a recommendation, and that will be factored into the manager's recommended budget to the board for their consideration. Now, what, you know, if there's any steps to be taken beyond that, certainly, we can talk about that, but that's currently kind of the approach that we are thinking about using as we move forward.
So what involvement does the board have moving forward in where we land on this?
I think once we talk with the departments and the consultant, and if we find our place, find ourselves at a place where we're in agreement, I would like to share some information with the board prior to the budget message meeting, the mid-month meeting in May, whether that would be me reaching out to you individually, or how we do that, but I would like to reach out to the board members and make you all aware of what's in that recommended budget before I, you know, present that to you publicly.
And I think the board generally likes to hear things as a group, if possible. Do we agree with that? We may need to have a date in there sometime to go through this.
We can do that. I just want to get everybody on the same page first.
What if you find yourself not in agreement?
Well, if...
It happens from time to time.
Right, if...
It won't be anything new. We deal with disagreement from time to time.
Right. We will work our best to get to a place of agreement, and if that's just not possible, then that information will be brought to the board for your guidance.
We'll still have a recommendation at mid-May, at a mid-May meeting.
Oh, yes.
And if that was in agreement or not.
Yeah.
And really, what the board looks for is a recommendation from Stan.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Good job, sir. All right, any other topics you want to talk about concerning the budget today? Are you sure you don't have any other topics you want to talk about? Everything good?
What's the next step?
I think the next step, I'll let her...
Sure, just what we spoke about, working our way through the rest of the study, and I'm sure there's still going to be some things that we need to tweak. We'll be looking as staff at a small financing bundle to see what we can do with vehicles moving forward and technology. Got some information yesterday about the potential for a technology bundle, so we'll continue to gather that information and make it part of the budget recommendation at the second meeting in May, but then, of course, with the issue of the study, we'll be back in touch with you about that.
If we have specific feedback...
Please reach out to me. Yes, yes, if there has been information that you've received over yesterday and today that you would like to share thoughts on that, please reach out to me.
Well, to help you finalize it, I will speak for myself. Where you were with your budget yesterday as a total number and a total increase, I feel reasonably comfortable with, and what we were using out of projected use out of fund balance. I mean, it looked considerably better than what it did to begin with, and it put us in a range of a proposed tax rate that is higher than I'd like for it to see, but I hope our citizens understand that our adjusted rate has got to take into account 15 years of no increase in revenue, and we got some catching up to do in some key areas as we discussed this morning. So how does the rest of the board feel about where we were yesterday with the total number and what fund balance we projected to use, to give her an idea of what our appetite looks like? If there's any comment on that?
I'll comment on that specifically.
Well, I would agree with the comment that we've got some catching up to do, that there were some unmet needs, and, you know, with last year's budget, balancing the budget, going into the fund balance, $8 million, that really shows that, and so I think we're going to work and do our best to strike that balance. You know, we don't want to break anyone's budget, but we've got to provide some services.
Other comments?
I'm good.
Okay. All right.
We're in a good spot.
Okay, well, if we're all done, I would entertain a motion to recess until the date I said earlier, which was April 16th at 6 o'clock, and we will be here back at the Ag Center.
Motion to recess till the 16th.
Have a motion on the floor, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, any questions on that motion? All who favor the motion, let me know, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a light side. Motion carries. Have we go, have we cut and heard from all commissioners about what we talked about at our last meeting, about, you know, the plaques out in the garden? Please give her your answer on that.
Commemorative courtyard.
Commem, I can't say that word, so I'm dodging it, but the courtyard, how about that? Well, she, nobody, everybody apparently hasn't responded. I think she just told me she had a majority, but I would hope every commissioner will let her know where she stands. All right, we stand adjourned. I'll stand recess, excuse me.
That means 16 to 6, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, 6 o'clock, thank you.